Call the meeting to order, please. This is the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees regular meeting for Thursday, September 4th, 2014, at the time of 7:00. I'd ask you to please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman, here. Trustee Hamilton, here. Trustee Pollak, here. Trustee Valerie, here. Trustee Collins, here. Trustee Foley, here. Village manager, Scolera, here. President Sells, here. Also present, Clerk Haley.
Yeah, the board, if you'd please join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equal and just for all.
Thank you very much, and welcome to everyone who's here this evening and those watching at home. You're welcome to speak during our meetings at any time. You can speak during public comment, or if you'd like to wait till a particular agenda item comes up, you're welcome to do that as well. I just ask that you be recognized by the president and make your comments from the podium, so that folks at home can hear and see what you have to say. So having said that, first up tonight, we have a very happy occasion, a celebration of the Riverside Little League Boys 10 U District 96, I mean District 9 Little League Champions. And so I'd like to introduce the coach, Mr. Mike Murphy.
So President Sells, thank you very much for having us, trustees, appreciate it. This is a great honor for the boys to come see you guys and, you know, to be on TV here and be able to celebrate what they accomplished, which was pretty amazing. So, you know, talking to Joe, Valerie, we talked about a brief summary of the games and kind of the whole experience, so I'll just dig right in. So the first thing I'd like to say about these guys is just how hardworking they are. We decided as coaches, Coach Pecorek and Coach Saharsky and I, that we would have practices every day once the Little League season ended. And we did, and we didn't make them mandatory, we just said, "We're gonna do it every day", whether all three coaches could be there or not. And we called 7:00 AM practices, they showed up early, they stayed for two hours, they'd want to stay longer. We called 6:00 PM practices, they showed up early, they'd stay for two hours, they'd want to stay longer. Parents had to drag them off the field. Really speaks to their work ethic, great parents, you know, just real supportive, awesome, awesome group of kids to work with, and, you know, I look forward to some of the other coaches to possibly doing it again next year. So recap of the district games. So we had districts and sectionals. So the district games, our boys started out strong against Brookfield, and they slaughtered them in four innings. So we came out, bats were hot, defense was on in game one. Game two, though, second game of districts, proved otherwise. Nothing we did seemed to go right, and just everything went wrong. We couldn't get our bats going and struggled a little in the field. Our pitching is not, was not what it usually is against Western Springs, and they took advantage, so they ended up whipping us, I think, 16 to 9, or, you know, just a tough game, and we had to recover. So they rebounded quickly and they never looked back. Our next game was the first of five elimination games in districts. They knocked out Brookfield right away, we ended up playing them again because they beat Lyons McCook, and they came out on fire, 22 to 6, similar fashion to the first game. And winning that game allowed us to see Western Springs again and get our revenge. The boys were dying to play them again because they just didn't think they showed their best. Next game against Western Springs, we came out, we were on fire, and we ended up slaughtering them in five innings, 16 to 4. Since this was Western Springs' first loss, we had to face them again the next day. Their coaches recovered a little, we played an excellent game, and final score, 3 to 2 to beat them, you know, after playing, I guess, our fifth game. So to recap, we played five games in six days and had one loss. We now had to face the Grange, who had not suffered a loss and only played three games in the whole tournament. So for those of you that don't know, that leaves them with a ton of pitching typically, you know, because if you play three games in five days, you get a lot of rest for your pitchers, and Little League really takes care of these guys and makes sure they don't pitch too much. So to win the game, not only did we have to play them, our sixth, to win the tournament, not only did we have to play them in the sixth and seventh game, we had to beat them twice in one day. It was a doubleheader. So the first game was a seesaw battle, and it ended with us on top. We out-hit and out-pitched them to get the win. Needless to say, the Grange was beside themselves. They kept asking each other where our pitchers came from. Coach Pecorek overheard their coaches saying, "There was no way Riverside played five games in six days and still had pitching." Then the second game started, and their jaws dropped. Once again, we out-pitched and out-hit them to win 6 to 5. Three-run games in a row. It was unbelievable, and we were champions. So to speak to the actual experience, so that's the games, right? The experience was unbelievable. The support from Riverside, I still, I'm getting goosebumps right now thinking about it. We had a couple hundred fans at those last couple games. In sectionals, I think it grew, but to speak to districts, these guys, even when they were losing, they were having fun, they were enjoying the experience. In between games, they're dancing, music's playing. We actually got a recording of the boys just having a great time, and just awesome experience. Little League does it right. They make these guys feel like they should, like champions, like, you know, just even just playing in the tournament, it's awesome. So moving on, we made sectionals. It's been a long time. I think, Joe, your team was the last team to make it in Riverside in 2000?
My son, both Coach Davis with the 9, 10-year-olds.
Yeah, so that was 14 years ago, 13, 14 years ago, so very, very proud to be a part of it. So sectional games started, and the first game was an interesting one. We played Burbank America, we slaughtered them in four innings, 10-0. Burbank struggled at the plate, they made a couple errors, and they pitched okay. But however, we've never played a team quite like them, and I don't know, Joe, if you've experienced this, but their chanting was unreal. And Little League, I guess, has a history back in the day that chanting was normal. Anymore, it just doesn't happen, and they were chanting things like, "Three and two, what you gonna do? You're gonna walk him, walk him." They were spelling out ball, B-A-L-L, ball. I mean, just while our pitchers are pitching, you know, while they're delivering, and it was just, it was crazy. We didn't, the kids were kind of like, "What's going on here?" But it was awesome because they didn't rattle them, they dealt with it, they laughed it off, they shrugged it off, and they represented Riverside well by not doing things negatively toward Burbank America, which was awesome. So then we moved on to the next game and played Hinsdale, who was the favorite to win state, actually, by the 9, 10-year-olds, as far as we all knew or thought. They're a tough team, and they won their district by winning every game they played by seven or more runs, so they hadn't even faced an opponent really yet. We battled in that game, but we lost 9 to 5, so now we're in a situation where we face elimination every game we play on out. Next was Mantino, we ended up beating them, we slaughtered them in four innings, 16 to 6, and then we had to play Hinsdale again. Two games in a row, but it was two days this time, two days different. Hinsdale still had not lost a single game, and we were now facing our seventh elimination game. The boys came out to play, and we hammered them with great hitting, fielding, and pitching. Shot them out 7-zip, and I'm not sure the official count, but I think 250 to 300 Riversideers were there cheering us on. So the next day, we had to play Hinsdale again, and we were feeling great about it, but the gas finally ran out. Final game, after leading 3 to 1 in the first inning and a 5 to 3 in the second, Hinsdale unloaded on us and sent us home early after four innings. It was a true championship game, and that's what's great, is we actually pushed Hinsdale to face elimination for their first time in tournament play, Little League. But it was awesome, we faced elimination eight times, and they won seven of those eight times, which is pretty cool. So like I said, attitude was great. I think a couple other things to speak to how they represented Riverside. Lyons McCook, tournament director, and Hinsdale tournament director, talked about how, just what great kids these guys were, how encouraging they were to all the players, how you could just see them having a blast again. In between innings, music playing, you know, fielding ground balls, dancing in the field, singing, just represented us great. So awesome job, I'm proud of you guys, did great, and that's it. Any questions?
Yeah, before you introduce the kids, you know, I read one time that a parent could ask a child to take the garbage out, and he'll walk down the driveway swearing under his breath for, you know, 30 feet. A coach could ask that same kid to run a mile, and he'll do it with a smile on his face.
Absolutely.
So the coaches, you know, it's a bottom-down, you know, and the leadership that you and your coaching staff show, and what you do is amazing, and you all should be extremely proud of yourself as well as your-
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that. Yeah, so to add to that, Coach Chris Pecorek and Coach Mike Saharsky, who couldn't be here because of a Hauser event, they're just awesome. I mean, they work as hard as these guys do, possibly harder, which I don't think's possible, but they do. We're always, as a group, we're always trying to push these guys, or trying to figure out what we can do to make them better, and just again, hats off to everyone working as hard as they can for these kids. And the best part of it all is just seeing how much they love the game, you know, and they actually want to be there, which I just take so much pride in. It's awesome. You know, they're just, they love the game. I mean, they play wiffle ball, you know, in between games, you know, after we played, you know, 60-something practices, you know, in three weeks, and 11 games, they're still playing wiffle ball out there, so it's awesome. So that being said, anything else? Start announcing the players? Yeah? Okay. All right. First up, he's one of our top pitchers, who has thrown a very high percentage of strikes. He forces teams to put the ball in play, which plays our strength, defense. He's also a great contact hitter, one of the prettiest swings on the team, number 00, Steven Berger.
Everybody's got a different tone.
He's an all-around great player, who plays shortstop, second base, outfield, you name it. A great pitcher who closed out many wins for us in tournaments. He also hit above 500 for Little League tournaments with many extra-base hits. His ability to hit great pitching is fun to watch. Number 23, Miles Casey. He's a rock-solid kid, nothing phases him, not even facing elimination, up 2-1 in the championship game against the Grange. He's a great outfielder and can hit the ball a mile, not too shabby of a dancer either. Number 7, Jack Cronin. All right, next, he might be the fastest kid in Riverside under 15 years old. Almost every coach we've faced mentioned how crazy fast he is. We used him a lot as a special pinch runner as a strategy, and it paid off. He's a great outfielder and hit very well for us in the tournaments. Number 21, Gustavo Lenares.
He just wants to shake hands.
All right, he's a top pitcher for this team, had key outings against Western Spring and Hinsdale to help us win. His deceiving pitches had batters off-balance, hitting routine ground balls and pop-ups for our defense to field. Number 3, Charlie Lyons. Another utility player who can play infield and outfield. He has a monster swing and can hit the ball as hard as anyone on the team. He also pumps every run up during games to keep our spirits high. Number 14, Eddie Malias. Next, he's my son. He plays with great passion and loves the hot corner, third base. He made some key plays in the field for us during the tournament, and had many extra-base hits for the team. One of our players hit above 400 for Little League tournament play. Number 10, Owen Murphy. All right, he's a power pitcher who throws tons of strikes. He had a huge victory against the Grange to get us to the championship game. Another contact hitter who has a beautiful swing, number 79, Jack Nekrat. Next, he never met a ball he couldn't catch, plays a tough centerfield for our team, catching anything from right to left field. Also a solid hitter who delivered a couple key triples in district play and many big hits in sectionals. All right, next, he's a top fielder on the team with unbelievable range. He can cover from behind second base to a couple steps from first. He made many big plays for us during the tournament, also a great contact hitter. He's another great outfielder who drew many cheers from the crowds during tournament play. You might have heard me announce his name a couple times after making some great catches in right and left field. Also another very fast plater who was utilized as a special pinch runner, number 1, T.J. Sloan. Next, he's another all-around great player. He plays the corners well and catches a great game. He had two big wins for us pitching against the Grange in the championship game and Hinsdale in our shutout. He's another player who hit above 500 for the tournament, number 28, Brian Toomey. All right, last but not least, he's a stud fielder who gives 110% on every ball in play. He recorded the save in the championship game against the Grange and will forever be tagged by me as having ice in his veins. Another solid bat during tournament play, hitting above 400, number 15, Brady Vias. Also, one last thing about the parents, how great they are. I mean, the support's unbelievable, they're always there for us, they make every attempt to make the kids, get the kids to practice, get them to games, get them there early, you name it, they're there for us. Special thanks to Kevin Casey, who also came out and supported us when one of our coaches had to leave to go on vacation. He stepped right in and encouraged the kids the whole time, so that's it.
And for you parents, copies of this video are available for $16.99 in Riverside Cable Commission. Okay. All right. We'll let the din die down just a little bit here before we get back. Maybe the din's not going to quiet then. That's okay, okay. All righty, moving on, well, it doesn't get much better than that. Everything's gonna be anticlimactic after this, even your appointment, Trustee Collins. So next up is public comment. Would anybody like to, Secretary of Commerce, Mr. Gallagos, would like to speak with us?
Good evening, Mr. President, trustees, and those in attendance, and to those watching at home. Sir, I come before you on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. It is my pleasure as Secretary of Commerce to remind the public of the upcoming chamber events. A reminder for all those who purchased their Person of the Year tickets, Person of the Year dinner will be held at the golf club on Wednesday, September 10th. Cocktails are at 6, dinner is at 7, dress is semi-formal. We set a very good turnout, we've sold over 100 tickets to it. Venue selections have already been taken care of, so it should be a very good evening. The other reminder is for the annual car show, which will be on Sunday, September 28th. That will start at 9:00 in the morning, and for that, we do expect about 300 cars or so, and hoping that Mother Nature is on our side. It should be a very good turnout for that. We're also looking forward to that concert we have tomorrow. That's a great idea, I gotta say. It really is.
Thank you.
But I do have to say that, Peter, when I heard the news about your decision, I certainly was not happy about it. But I can say that I am 100% happy for you in that decision that you've made. You've done so much for the chamber, you've done so much for our village, we owe you so much gratitude for the things that you have done, and you will greatly be missed. So please do not be a stranger, and we wish you, of course, the very best.
Thank you.
Good luck to you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, Mr. President, I have nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address the board? Hearing none, we'll move on to the reports of village officers. I was going to say this at the end of the meeting, but since Mr. Gallagos brought it up, in case there are folks watching who don't know what he was talking about, I'll do it now. Tonight is Mr. Scolera's last night with us here at the board meetings. He is taking a position in Bloomingdale as the village manager there, his hometown, which will be great for him and his family. He'll be able to actually go home for dinner before he has to come to board meetings. And I've been with Peter his entire tenure here, and he started off good and just got better. And the thing that I guess I would like to say, as someone who's worked with him and his friend, is that, I was thinking about this today, and you know, knowledge can be learned and skills can be acquired, but kindness and grace, those are characters of the soul. And his accomplishments speak for themselves, but it's his character that will be the indelible gift that you've left to us. So I wish you all the best, my friend. Thank you.
I think you've certainly made it easy for a person who's new to the board to get used to being on the board, so thank you. And thank you for everything that you've done for Riverside. You've certainly left a mark, and you will be missed a lot. Thank you. And, you know, if you guys ever want to talk about Exposed Aggregates in Bloomingdale, give us a call.
Okay. All right. So moving on now, we do have an item of business, which is the appointment-
Oh, no, you do, you're right, I'm sorry. I'm next. You're right, sorry.
He's trying to speed it up because it's the last call.
So much for grace.
So we do have an appointment this evening of Trustee Collins as liaison to the Economic Development Commission. Actually, I don't think we even need him. Isn't that just a presidential appointment? Do we need a motion? I gotta ask for a motion in a second.
Motion by Ms. Hamilton, second by Mr. Valerie.
Any discussion? She'll be great. Please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman, aye. Trustee Hamilton, aye. Trustee Pollak, aye. Trustee Valerie, aye. Trustee Foley, aye. Trustee Collins is not going, is she here?
No. Motion carries. And that is all I have for this evening, and now your final managers report.
Well, I have just two items. The one, the first is, an E flash has gone out to the community. The timing isn't the greatest, however, this is a project that is very much needed and will have an immediate impact for the residents in that area. Groveland Avenue and Park Place will be experiencing a water main project beginning on Monday, September 8th. During that time, Groveland Avenue from Forest Avenue to Park Place, and Park Place between Groveland and Woodside will be closed through traffic Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. The project is expected to take about a month to complete, and will include the lining of two water mains under the Displanes River near Forest Avenue Bridge. Residents who utilize Lot 3 on Park Place will still have access to their parking spaces, so that will not be affected. I'd like to thank the residents in that area ahead of time for their patience with this project, and apologize for the timing, but like I said, it is a project that needed to be completed. And then the other thing is, just to follow up to President Sells, the only reason why I have been able to be as successful as some people think, even though I don't think I have been that successful, is that I have a great staff to work with, starting from Kathy, who's always my sounding board, and I can bounce ideas off of, and has told me a couple of times, "You're crazy." So great department heads from Tom Weitzel, our police chief, Jessica Francis, the public finance director, Ed Bailey, our public works, Ron Malkiati, our parks and rec, and Spencer Kamora, our fire chief. There's a great leadership here, and Riverside is fortunate to have individuals like them to be a part of it. But the thing that really makes things work is you guys. And I am happy to say that Riverside, under Ben's leadership, can expect many great things, and I'm glad that I was at least part of the initial part, and I am still excited to see the end result. I think once a number of these projects that Ben has brought forward are implemented, Riverside will be like, "Whoa, what's going on? Is this the same Riverside?" So I'm excited for you all, I thank you for your support and your trust in me, and I wish you the best, and I will stay in touch. And I'm actually gonna probably gonna take Mike, he doesn't know this, but he made an offer without knowing he made the offer. I'm gonna go visit him in Colorado once he gets that house built, so. So thank you, I've enjoyed my time. I thank all of the residents of Riverside, this is a very great community, as was evident by the Little League. I think the theme is common, and it's been common the entire five years that I've been here, that this is a sense of community, and that's what makes Riverside so special. So thank you for all of the experiences, and I will miss all of you.
Thank you, Peter. Anyone else? Moving on then, next is the approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items which anyone needs to remove for discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion in a second for approval. Motion by Mr. Foley, second by Ms. Sussman. Please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman, aye. Trustee Hamilton, aye. Trustee Pollak, aye. Trustee Valerie, aye. Trustee Collins, aye. Trustee Foley, aye.
Motion carries. Next up are reports of departments, commissions, and trustee liaisons. We have no commission or department reports, but I would ask any trustees who have a liaison report now- report. Now's the time. Anyone over here?
I do.
Mr. Ballering?
I'm happy to announce that the final phase of the Patriots Parks Project has been completed. The first phase completed last year consisted of the removal of dead trees and shrubs. It also included the conversion of some plant beds to church grass to reduce maintenance and improve overall appearance in the park. The final phase began with extensive removal of all weeds, brush, and invasive plants last week. This cleared way for the installation of all new plantings and mulch, which were completed the other day. This project was completed with the assistance of the Park and Rec Board, village manager, the members of the LAC, and with special thanks to our forester, Mike Collins, as this project relied heavily on his coordination and expertise. We're even able to reach out to the residents of Parkway, who were negatively impacted by the construction of the Costco building, and incorporated five mature evergreen trees. In addition to those trees, we have a total of six understory trees and 135 shrubs. This project will not only reduce maintenance at this location, but will drastically improve the appearance of the area, and I encourage you all to go visit it. It looks unbelievable.
It really does.
Tomorrow night, Friday, September 5th, is a special night. It's my 32nd anniversary. I'm sorry. All right, now you pick up the case early. A night at Rivinia. Enjoy, Rivinia, I'm sorry. Enjoy a concert at Guthrie Park tomorrow night, which is free. The music of Gutierrez Azul will begin at 7:00 p.m. Residents can bring a blanket and picnic, or enjoy food and refreshments from Chuchu, who will have a selection of hot and cold tapas, wine, sangria, and beer, beginning at 5:30, so you can get there early to stake out your claim. Join us for a free evening of great music under the stars. And last, our Autumn brochure will be online tomorrow. Make sure to check out all of the programs and new events. And that is it for recreation. And cable, I just hope everyone keeps an eye out for the cable, because we are gonna start Saturday morning cartoons shortly, which are the old cartoons that we remember when we were kids, which will include Hackle and Jackal and Diver Dan. And we are also gonna start incorporating some late-night insomnia movies. These are old, out-of-public-roll movies that we're gonna try to start trying to fill content for. So for you that can't sleep at night, turn to Channel 10 and watch the movies. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Six, or 10. Oh, we'll have, oh, there's a whole ton of them. There's some old Daffy Ducks, there's Diver Dan.
Peter's never heard of any of these. This is what it's...
Diver Dan.
Remember Journey to the Center of Time and Garfield Ghosts? All kinds of good stuff. Ray Rayner. Ray Rayner. Tobar the Robot.
Next up is ordinances and resolutions. We have none. We have no considerations, any new business from anyone. Hearing none, we do have a need for an executive session tonight for consideration of the employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees. We will not take action. We will not reconvene, so I'd ask for a motion to go into closed session.
Motion.
By Mr. Foley. Second by Ms. Collins. Please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman, aye. Trustee Hamilton, aye. Trustee Pollak, aye. Trustee Ballering, aye. Trustee Collins, aye. Trustee Foley, aye.
The public hearing is adjourned.